Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining this meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board on November 16th. The agenda, item number one is approval of last meeting's minutes, November 2nd. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one minor addition, and that's I would include that I think we had some documents as part of the last meeting, and I would just include the names of the documents that we used at the bottom of the minutes.
What was that document? What were they?
There was the Campion Farms, and I think there might have been something else, I can't remember, but that is an open meeting law requirement to list documents that were used at meetings.
Okay, yes, the Campion Farms, that was the ad that was in the real estate book. Do you have a copy of that, Jennifer?
Was it this? Was it this?
Yes, do you have a copy of that?
You need that?
No.
Oh.
The real estate thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you just add that as a document considered at the meeting or viewed at the meeting, something like that?
And it was a real estate from what ad?
It's a, it's an ad for Campion Farms, which we discussed as a place for Jeff Lacy to visit.
Okay.
And I found it in a, in the monthly, you know, listing of real estate offerings, that magazine that you see at supermarkets and stuff, several months ago. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? So I'm assuming that the motion and the second were to approve the minutes as amended. Okay? Okay, Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Wayne?
Aye.
Marie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. The next item is what I received and Jennifer distributed from the consulting firm BSC. It's called Outline for Stockbridge Zoning Survey, and this ought to be added to the minutes, too, Jennifer, as a document. Well, it was on the website, right? It's on the website?
Yeah. You want me to state that it was at the meeting?
Well, if it's, if it's on the website, I don't think you need to state it.
Well, you do. It's required by open meeting law to include it in the minutes. You just listed, any documents should just be listed at the bottom of the minutes.
Okay. So this is what, BSC, as a reminder, is the firm that the town used to assist with the municipal vulnerability survey that was done earlier this year, and which qualified us for certain grants to mitigate the various vulnerabilities that were identified. They did a good job. Mike Canales thought very highly of the work they did, and Nancy, I think you were in a couple of meetings with BSC, and you too, Marie, if I recall, only one. I was impressed with them, too. They seemed to know what they were talking about. They'd obviously done it for other organizations. Mike Canales suggested that they might be able to help us with this townspeople survey with respect to the zoning bylaw we've been working on for months. So I talked with several other people, Marie and I did, actually, just to get a sense of, is this something they could do, and if so, how would they go about it? One of the thoughts they had was, gee, we think that there's a professor in the graduate program at UMass who could get his graduate students to work on a survey, which sounded good, but the BSC checked with that professor, and he's no longer doing it. So it's, that's not an option. But they themselves might be willing to help us and to kind of move it along. They sent us this outline for the survey. Basically, it's all the work that we would have to do to make the survey useful. They did mention, and we haven't pursued this, that there are specialty companies or not-for-profit groups that actually do surveys for a living. I mean, it's their specialty. BSC is, is an organization that does all sorts of consulting for municipalities, I think, all sorts, all different kinds of consulting. But the people at BSC said there are more narrowly focused organizations that do nothing but creating all the material relating to surveys. We haven't pursued that, but I wanted to share this with you tonight as a process that I think has been used, in fact, it says it's been used for other communities. And as the introductory paragraph puts it, what we would do and what BSC would do with us. It strikes me as a pretty comprehensive list of an approach to a useful survey. I didn't see any glaring gaps, not that I have lots of experience with surveys, but it struck me as a pretty logical and comprehensive way to approach the work of actually producing a survey and, and then putting it out and, and following up with questions and feedback and analysis of, of the findings. So I'm not going to read through this because you all have it, but does anybody have any questions or issues with this approach? I'm not suggesting, by the way, that we engage this firm. Frankly, I think in terms of the order of business, I'd rather first see the results of Jeff Lacy's site visits. And by the way, I think he's coming on Saturday, which was the original date that we talked about, December 20th, I mean, November 20th. So I think he will be here that day. I'd like to see the results of his work before we go to this next step. That's just my personal opinion. Does anybody have a view on that or on any elements of this outline?
What do you think our next step will be once we decide when to do it? What is the next step from this? Deciding that somebody will do it?
From this?
Yeah, what would be our next step when we decide it's time to do it? Where do we go? We look for whoever's going to help us with it, like these guys or a different company? Is that what you're thinking would be our next step?
Yeah, I, I'm a little, always a little leery of accepting the first proposal or the first idea, although this sounds pretty thoughtful, and clearly they seem to have some experience with this. I'd like to get at least one other, you know, thoughts from one other firm or individual.
Should we start looking at that even without making any decisions?
We could, we could.
So that by the time Jeff gets his stuff back to us?
Yep.
If we have a plan, we can kind of get it started?
Yep.
I mean, because it always takes us forever to do anything.
Yeah.
I had a question. I'm sorry, do you want to?
Nancy, Nancy, go ahead.
Wayne? Okay. I was wondering if the BSC had a template that, you know, so we're not recreating the wheel and spending all this time discussing what questions we want and voting on what questions and who's, you know what I mean?
I don't.
It just seems like it's going to be extremely time consuming.
It, it will take some time. I didn't specifically ask if they have a template, but I think this is a specialty survey. This is a survey about a particular matter before the planning board, that is, this zoning bylaw that we've been dealing with. So I don't think there's a, they're likely to have a template that would fit what we're looking for. I think, I think we're going to have to start from nothing and build something up in terms of the kinds of questions that belong and the, just addressing some of the other questions and points that are made in this, in this piece that they sent us. Short answer is, I don't believe there's a template. I think, I think we would be pretty much starting from scratch because of the unique nature of what we're, what we're addressing. Wayne?
Bill, I worry about starting down this path without sort of our own specific ideas on it. I mean, what, what is it that we're looking to accomplish with this survey specifically? And how will we know if it was successful or important, or is it going to be so wide-ranging that, you know, going through this whole process of asking people what they think about this proposed bylaw when we really truly haven't gotten through it ourselves, and we've been looking at it for months? And I, I'm just worried that if we put out something like this, I mean, I think it's very vague. I, I feel like it's going to be opening up a can of worms again when we were finally somewhat narrowing the focus, and now we're going to blow that right out of the water with this survey.
You know, those are good points, Wayne, and I'm not sure I have personally answers for them, although I would say, I forget who it was who suggested a survey in the first instance, and I'm not, who was it?
I think it was Kate. Kate had wanted a survey for a long time, right from the get-go.
And, and in principle, I think it's a good idea if we have a clear sense of what we want to get out of it. And that's why I think the questions, the way the thing is designed and what it contains is, those questions are so important. If they're not focused and pointed and completely relevant, we risk getting something back that isn't going to be helpful. I take your point that, you know, there, most people in town have not really gotten into the weeds on this bylaw, and I'm not sure that, in my own mind, we would be asking in a survey for them to get into the weeds as opposed to asking them, what are your concerns? What, what, as we contemplate a bylaw that would deal with requiring more open space in, in developments, what are the pros and cons of that? I'm not, I haven't formulated any of the questions in my own mind, but I take your point that if they're not focused, it's not going to be very helpful. And, and so Nancy's point is a good one. It's going to take some time to do this.
I know, and I just hope we have, we can set a speci, if we do this.
If we do it.
If we.
I accept that we're not committed to doing this at all at this stage. Yes?
I guess there's two different things.
I had it for a while.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. We're not seeing very well on this screen. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had it for a while. So I guess, looking at this, this, this material that they sent, I, I guess, you know, at the last meeting, I brought up the question of, we actually did a survey last year with the same group, and it was a housing survey, and this is a housing bylaw that we're looking at. So to me, it seems like we spent money to have that done. So I would recommend that as a start, we've already got those results, and, you know, that we take a look at that. There are some interesting comments in there. You know, people talked about, you know, they gathered input on, on, you know, what people wanted later in life and so on. So, you know, senior housing was, was something that they asked about, and that's something we have talked about. So I would recommend that as a first step, we've, we have that information, we've paid for it. It seems like we should, we should take a look at that material first.
Okay, other comments, questions?
Well, I agree, and I also, you know, I'm sort of wondering, the, we haven't, we haven't really considered the, the housing survey, and, and the information there is, I think, quite relevant to, to, to this discussion. And then what other history has there been of surveys in town? I've been on the road so much that I feel like I've missed some things, but I mean, I feel in the, like, I mean, within the last five, 10 years even, you know, there have been, you know, a couple of town, town-wide surveys. Am I, am I wrong that, that, you know, did speak to, you know, the, you know, sort of planning for Stockbridge?
Well, so Carl, there was the visioning committee, but that did not.
Maybe that's what.
This survey, but it does, there is a report attached to it, and that was posted on. And then in the 90s, the town did a master plan, you know.
Well, the 90s is a way back, though.
It is a way back.
Need a new master plan.
Yeah, we do.
I will say it again, yeah.
Yeah.
Boy.
So, so I think that, you know, the housing survey would, but of course, there is the, the report from the, from the visioning committee. I mean, that was not, you know.
I guess that's, I guess that's what I'm thinking about, but I mean, I, I read through the, the, the housing survey, which, you know, was, was performed quite recently with, with interest, and, you know, it, it may not answer, you know, all the questions we're asking, but, 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 but it asks a lot, you know, and there was a lot of information, and it was, I thought it was, it was, was, was very professionally done, and, you know, it's, it, it kind of put a personal, kind of put a personal spin on some of the concerns of, of, of town, of town citizens.
Marie?
I guess Wayne is absolutely right. We need to have a reason and a goal of what we really want to find out and not just put out a survey. But I thought, when we first talked about this, that what it would help us to do is to see what the people in town feel about, even though we don't have a specific bylaw yet, would it help us to form our bylaw around how people in town feel about open space and, and, you know, density and that kind of thing? And I thought that was kind of the goal of the survey was to see, to help us to, to write the bylaw if we know how people feel about it.
I think that was.
But we need to have a goal, we need to have a mission for this bylaw.
Yeah.
And not just to do it. I mean, this survey.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
So my worry is that you say, well, how do you feel about open space? Well, I, I love open space. How do you feel about density? Well, I don't really like, you know, too much density.
You're right.
And I think, again, I think the vagary of potentially of this, and you say, well, we're working on this open space bylaw that's designed to keep open space. If they haven't been filed, because there's so much else around that good idea that we have bantered about here for quite some time, I think it's the details that you actually end up getting stuck on.
Yep.
I think the overall concept has appeal until you start getting into the weeds, if you will, of it all. And I, I'm not sure people are paying attention enough to really understand what it is we're talking about, unless you've sat in on a few of these meetings or read the thing yourself, which I think a handful may have, but not many more. I, that's, that's where I worry about it.
Yeah.
Okay, Wayne, I agree with you. I think you're absolutely right.
One thing I would add to that is that, I'm sorry, Wayne, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay, one thing I would add to that is that since we first talked about this, we had the site visits in Shute's Berry and Wendell, and I felt that there actually wasn't, you know, my opinion was that they actually weren't terribly helpful. I mean, the only built project that we saw, that I saw, was predated the, the Lacy bylaw. So, and to me, I didn't feel that that was anything really different than, for example, Tree Farm Road, or, you know, I know Campion Farms is not built out, but you can look at the map and see what it is, and you can drive up there and see it. So I think to be drafting a survey when, on something where there's nothing for people to see is challenging, and I guess at this point, my preference would be to, to, to look at that housing survey, since we paid for it, we have it, and there's some, I think there's some interesting information there that's worth discussing.
I, I think, I mean, you know, I think we owe it to the, the, to, to the effort that was put into that survey to, to, to block out whatever it is. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, all night, but, you know, 20 minutes, 30 minutes to just like talk through, you know, through it together as a group and, and, and see if, you know, see if there's, if there's something that we can take away from that. Because it's, it's not unrelated to, you know, the, the, the overall housing questions that, that we're trying to address. And I, and Wayne, I think that, you know, I mean, obviously, I mean, I don't know, maybe there's someone who's like opposed to the idea of open space, but they haven't shown up picketing.
No, that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting people are probably in favor of that.
Yeah, of course. That's what, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, I agree with you.
I'm wondering if maybe we should have some kind of public informational meeting before we do a survey, because people won't even know what we're talking about unless we tell them what we've been working on, and this is what we're looking at, and how do you feel about what we're looking at? That's, that's what I think.
I mean, I thought we kind of did that with.
Yeah, but that was a while ago. You know, this has been going on for so long, and we're, plus, we've morphed that first bylaw, well, we're on the eighth draft, so it's changed since the first go-around.
I mean, it might be worth, to Bill's point about waiting and seeing what Jeff Lacy comes up with, he's going to be here pretty soon. So, you know, it might be worth just, okay, you know, he'll do his visit and, and see what we get from that, and then, and take it from there.
Yeah, I think, you know, these comments have got me thinking that this survey really, I'm not sure I've, whether I've maybe mixed it up in my own mind, the difference between a survey and an information meeting where, you know, where, as Nancy suggested, maybe we should have a meeting, another public open meeting with the community, more than just one of these, to kind of brief the community on what we have done as a, as a planning board, where we are with this bylaw and why we're doing it. And I don't know who would come to that, whether there'd be enough interest to make that worthwhile, but I can see the point of doing that maybe before a survey, and I do agree that it makes sense to see Jeff Lacy's report after he makes these site visits here before we do.
Anything.
Anything more. I, I'm certainly in favor of putting the housing, housing survey on the agenda for our next meeting, which I think is December.
Right, thank you.
December 7th.
Well, and my apologies, by the way, for missing the last meeting as well as for being late to this one.
Oh, you had a good excuse.
No, but two weeks ago, I was flat on my back with food poisoning. You would not have wanted to talk.
Oh, gosh.
Better now.
Well, as long as you were Zooming, Carl.
You wouldn't mind it.
As long as you muted yourself.
Shut the door.
Yeah. Sorry you felt so bad, I didn't mean to make sense.
It was yesterday, it was on the day, but it happened to be last.
So, so Bill, I don't know if you remembered, but if Jeff is coming on the 20th, did you have a chance to ask him for, I wanted clean copies of those maps from when we went to?
Yes, I did ask him, I did ask him. I haven't heard back from him, but I will follow up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Bill?
Yes.
And related, if the survey was going to be mailed, do you have any idea what mailing to the town residents costs?
I'm sure that's pretty easy to find out. I mean, we could just ask, yeah, Theresa or somebody.
It's somewhere between $1,000 and $2,000, I think. It's not terribly expensive.
Okay.
I mean, I would, you know, one thing that, that housing survey that Patrick did demonstrated was what you can do with an online survey. I mean, there is a concern, you do have to address, to Roxanne's point, the issue of how many surveys can somebody complete? I mean, God help somebody that wants to complete more than one, but that was a, that was a, you know, vulnerability, I suppose, and you need to assure people that these things are reliable. That's important. So, but I would, I, I think it's, it's definitely, I would love to see us consider the different options for getting the survey out there, and the advantages, the pros and cons of the different options, online or hard copy, you know, whatever it might be. I mean, to me, the response from the housing survey was, I'd have to look at the, the responses from the original master plan, I have those numbers somewhere, but it was, it was impressive. So I don't, I certainly think we should be considering online, the online option.
But 200 people responded, I don't think that's a very good thermometer of.
I don't know. I, I mean.
Wayne, the thing is, is that that wasn't really, I mean, they didn't really make a big effort to push that out there. Patrick, can you speak to that? You know, you know better than I.
Question of the chairman.
Go ahead.
A couple of, there were, I think, 211 responses, and you're going to have, can you hear me? Because I can.
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Kathy, Katie Keeman, who did the whole survey for us, coming in on December 9th to present to the select board on the MVP survey and the MVP report, and if you want to have a discussion of the survey, you might just ask Roxanne if you can make it a joint meeting, because then we could all talk to the actual people who did the survey together. So that's one idea. You know, I think that, you're right, it wasn't, we didn't, we didn't kind of promote it. The town doesn't have an email list, so, you know, for better or ill, most of the people wound up signing up, or because I had asked Carol Owens to promote it in her newsletter, got like 180 out of the 210 people, and I know you may, may not want to do that, and I won't get into it, I'm just saying that's where most of the responses came from. There is no way, I know, I've got a lot of experience with this, to avoid having two people fill out online, especially because it could be four people in the household. So if I filled out four, I'd be breaking the rules, but if a family of four with, you know, or two couples living, living in, two family, all with the same IP address, filled it out, they wouldn't be. You know, I think, I think it's.
I thought there was a way to have like a. I thought there was a way to have like a, a stamp so that you can, you know.
You need to number a survey based on, sending it to a specific person, but then it's not anonymous. You know, the only way to, to track one submission is to know who's submitting it. So, you know, you could certainly send one to every voter, that's 1,800 people. You know, that would, there's only 600 households, 1,800 people. It's not that much money. But then you're talking about a non, a non, you know, anonymous survey. I found with the one that we did, the most helpful part were the comments. You know, the percentages might vary a little bit one way or the other. Some people were trying to game it, which I don't believe, but you never know. But the comments were really unique and really insightful. And I think that that's sort of what you get out of it the most, is, is comments. I also have a different idea. I really like Nancy's idea of, look, you guys have a lot of, a lot of branches to this tree. Should it be by rights? Should, what parts should be special permit? Do you want to like have bonuses for like senior housing, or, or more conservation, or a lot of bonuses you talked about earlier on? I can see another session with Jeff where it was maybe in the gym, and or. Start doing things. You can actually poll people in real time.
Patrick, you're cutting out.
I'm just saying, you could have like basically a town meeting where we just get and talk about what some of your options are, and ask people to give you like a non-binding sort of feedback on it, if you're worried people gaming it. I, I would think with an anonymous survey, though, to base your decisions on it is kind of risky, because you're inviting then people with strong opinions to try to game.
Yeah.
So Patrick, what you're, what you're saying is maybe Nancy's idea about having an informational session that, you know, we publicize, you know, as though it were a town meeting. I mean, I certainly feel like, you know, if we go, if we go to, if we just go straight to town meeting right now with what we've got, nothing, you know, it, I don't think it's going to get voted, voted in. And, and, you know, if, 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 if there's, if, 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 if the people that actually come to show, show up at town meetings and vote, you know, have an opportunity to have more information, you know, you know, and, 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 and input, that might actually move this ball forward. So.
Bill.
The ratio that we did, it was interesting about, about what seniors do if they need to downsize. The more you, if you, if you create bonuses in this thing around affordable housing, which a lot of people care about, and you create bonuses around senior housing, you've got a better shot of passing. That's just my opinion, but I really think those are the, the touch points that when I talk to people, they seem to care about.
Wayne.
Before I open up this conversation to all the townspeople in the gym, which I think would turn into a, a fiasco, I think I would sooner, if we're going to see who even has an interest in this, I would sooner, that's why I asked about the cost of mailing. And I know this is, this language is a bit cumbersome, but I would sooner mail this draft date to everybody in town and say, here it is. This is where we are. Do you care about this, number one? Is this something you like, number two? And number three, get back to us with specifically things in this bylaw that you like or don't like, and should we pursue this any further, or should we call this a day? Because until we specifically, they, until they know exactly what we're talking about, we get, we open that conversation in the gym, and I think that's a mess. But I think if people care, they'll read this and respond. And then.
That's a great idea, I think.
That's what a great idea it is.
What's your assumption? What's your assumption that, that the entire board thinks this is, you know, where it needs to be?
No, but I, I think we'd get.
No, 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 we're not, we're not, we're not saying that we're necessarily all in agreement with every detail. But, you know, if we're at a point where we're information.
We could get some input.
Yeah, and we could get some input.
Specifically on this.
And I think, Wayne, you're right, you're, you're, you're right, the, like, you know, the gym is possibly a little, a little echoey, so.
Wayne, we interrupted, but I'm assuming you meant send out draft number eight. With, clearly marked as a draft, this is not a final document that has not been voted on by the planning board. Are you interested? So what are your interests? What are your concerns? And let us have your specific comments, if any.
Right. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, you can tell them that we're not all in agreement. We want to know what you think.
Yeah.
I think that was, Gary, I think that would be important.
It's a good idea.
So how do we get them to respond? Do they respond by email to the planning board, or how do, how do we get their response?
Well, I guess it's a little bit like sending out the survey itself. It'd probably be some combination of mailing and emailing. And, you know, I'm not particularly worried by people trying to game the system. If somebody wants to send in seven identical comments, I think we can smoke those out. The idea is to get it out as widely as possible. I think frankly, a 12% return on that housing survey is actually pretty good.
It is?
Yeah. I think expecting 30 or 40% to any kind of survey, to any body of people, is not very realistic.
Well, actually, Bill, with our master plan that was done in the 90s, the response was somewhere around 33 to 35%.
Different time.
Yeah, different time.
Different time.
People are.
It was hard copy.
Yeah. Anyway, I would not discount its value, the housing survey's value, by virtue of the fact that only 12% responded. I guess that's what I'm saying. And I think if we got 12%, if we got 200, or even 150, or 100 comments back, it could be very instructive. Not that we're going to be guided by the comments, but at least we, we'd get a sense of, okay. I mean, we already know what some of the hot button issues are, but it would help us zero in on ones that are not just my hot buttons or your hot buttons, but a big chunk of the public's hot button issues. And, and, and maybe there would be suggestions as to how better to address some of these points by, you know, really concerned citizens. I think it's a good.
I think the important thing with that also would be for us to agree on some kind of, you know, cover letter.
Yeah.
And, 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 and again, also, like, you know, the, the point of like, you know, how do you respond? I'm, I'm sure that there is some kind of, you know, you know, online comment, you know, platform, even if it's just an email address, you know, that we could, that we could, that we could solicit responses from. And, you know, and there's nothing wrong with the post office either. But, you know, I would point out, like, you know, you know, we're working on this. We're not in agreement on all these details. And, and, you know, we, you know, we, we are reviewing also the, the recent housing survey, so that people who did that don't feel that they were not paid attention to. And then, you know, please get back to us.
You know, it would be good to also have some definitions, explanations of basic terms that people won't be familiar with, like special permit, by rights. And also, you know, I would really be grateful if Jeff could provide us, I, you know, just didn't feel like I saw, saw a whole lot in Shutsberry and Wendell, and I'd be really grateful. One thing I noticed with, with both Joel and Jeff is that when you ask them for examples throughout the Commonwealth, not a whole lot of information is forthcoming, which, you know, makes me think that there's some problems that we need to know about. So I think it would be good to have some, you know, have, have some pictures so people know what this actually looks like.
Well, frankly, I think, I think if we get what I hope we will get from Jeff after his site visits in Stockbridge, I think the ones in Stockbridge are going to be a lot more interesting to people than in Wendell or Shutsberry. They're going to, you know, people will identify with them as they.
Are we going to get pictures? I mean, what are we going to get?
I think we can get pictures, yes. It's my understanding, he's, he's proposing to do aerial surveys, aerial, you know, drone pictures with demarcations of property lines, and his own workup of what a NRHPZ layout would look like versus a, one or more alternatives for subdivision layout.
So you, you've talked to him, that is what he's planning on, have you talked to him about?
That's my understanding. I, I'm going to talk to him before he comes again. He, he wants, I actually forwarded to him some background information on the sites that Gary sent me today, and I'm, I'm going to call him to make sure he's got that. He's also asked for the sites to be identified on one of those big maps that we have, and I can do that for him. I'm not going to propose to go around with him, no worries there. Just, just enabling him to make his way around town as efficiently as possible, and to produce something that's actually user-friendly for us.
So do you, can you send around the list? I know you, you summarized it at the last meeting, but it's not in the minutes. And I just don't, I know there were nine, but I don't remember every single one.
I'll forward, actually, I thought I.
It was an email just like there.
Yeah.
I thought I. I, I had a couple of questions about that.
It's in Stockbridge Updates, but I wasn't sure whether.
Well, that's what it was. It was in.
I thought I sent it, I, I'll send it, I'll send what I, I'll send to the planning board what I sent to Jeff, which was regurgitating the list we had agreed on. But I'll, I'll put it, you know, you'll see it on, on, on your email. I'll do that tomorrow.
Oh, it looked pretty good. But I mean, again, I mean, this is not like public record stuff. But I was curious about not including kind of, I mean, I mean, I mean, he should just be aware, frankly, but, you know, of, of, of the amount of acreage Tanglewood has, and, 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 Camp Machinac. I mean, those are, those, those, I mean, as far as I'm, as far as I'm concerned, Camp Machinac and Tangalwood should flourish forever, but just the way they are. But, you know, but I mean, but, 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 you know, when you're talking about just sheer sort of undeveloped acreage in town, you know, there are things that should be on, you know, you know, they should, they should be, they should be on our radars.
Can you take down your screen share, please?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. I think I read it six times now.
There you go, okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Was on the list, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, it was. The one that wasn't was Tanglewood. Subsequently, Carol Owens suggested that it be added.
Unfortunately.
I, I, I mean, I.
I don't see it as vulnerable as some of the other sites on the, on development.
Very much not so. But they, they don't have any kind of conservation restriction on any of that property.
So do you want, we've got some chats, some chat comments. Do you want me to read them at some point?
Okay, Pat, can you hang on, just let Patrick speak, and then Kate, please go ahead and read after Patrick.
With the chief operating officer of the BSO, who confirmed to me that they have absolutely no development plans on their long-term rate. Not, not workforce housing for like their summer workers, and certainly not, certainly not any resort or development stuff. They feel it would compete with their partners in the hotel and resort business.
I don't imagine that they do. I'm not even suggesting that they do. It's just that it's, 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 you know, I mean, it's, anything, anything's possible.
Yeah, okay. Kate, do you want to read the chats?
Okay, so from Julie Edmonds, I've sent many comments on various drafts of the.
And they.
NHR, whatever.
Whatever it's called.
Whatever, yes.
Bylaw to date, and I've never received an answer from the planning board yet. How are you going to be able to acknowledge the people who might comment after getting your mailing? And then there's a question from Anita Schwerner. Can Bill read the list out loud, please? I don't know if you have it, Bill, but that's a good question.
In terms of, in terms of Julie's question about her comments and not having had responses, and, and how would we respond to people who comment on this draft if we do go that direction? I'm not sure, in, I mean, let's talk about this. I'm not sure we would be responding to individual comments. The idea of sending the draft to the community is to get a sense of where the focal points are from the comments, not, oh, Joe Blow over on Christian Hill Road wants to know why such and such didn't happen. I don't think it's, we need to respond in that way. I think we need this survey in this form, if that's the form it takes, to provide guidance collectively to the planning board, not, not be a basis for us to respond to every question or comment individually. At least, that's my view.
I agree.
Yes.
And in terms of the list, I was just trying to look it up. Hang on. Bear with me. Okay, I think it's. Okay, here's the list. 37 Interlaken, Hylon Farm Property, west of Route 7, the property that's in Stockbridge. Stone Hill, the existing subdivision off of Old Stockbridge Road. Campion Farms. Eden Hill, the Marion Fathers. Kripalu. Camp Machinac. Either Oranoke or White Pines. Meadow Road. And that's it.
Okay. And you, thank you, Bill. Will you send that around?
I'll do it right now.
I mean, Tree Farm Road is kind of old news at this point, but, you know, I mean, I'm not suggesting that it, the list needs to be longer than that. But, you know, I mean, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think, I counted one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine or 10, if you do, and White Pines, which seemed like.
A half of a day, yeah.
Yeah, it's a reasonable representative sample.
I don't know, I just, I do, I do, I do feel, though, that there is a lot to be learned by driving around Stockbridge, actually.
Yeah. And he does have maps, the big maps that the, I think they came from Berkshire Regional Planning on.
Large, great maps.
Conservation land. So he's got, he's got a sense of the lay of it. And as I said, I'm going to mark up my copy with, just so that he knows where these places are, just for purposes of driving. I'm not going to go with it. So are we generally agreed that maybe the approach ought to be to send around with a cover letter, a, a copy of draft date for comments, both by email and snail mail, with some additions, some definitions, and maybe some, a little bit of background, you know, neutral background on what the planning board's been up to? And if we agree on that.
Questionnaire for them to fill out at the end, how they feel. Are you including, like, they can send back into us?
Yeah, I think it would include a request for comments.
We'd like for comments.
Yeah, your comments. Yeah, your comments, comments on, on the overall ideas, comments on specific elements of the, of the draft, things that aren't covered, that you wish.
Should scrap them.
Would be covered.
And whether we should pursue it.
If they want us to pursue it.
And whether we should pursue it, yeah. I can, I can take a stab at a draft of a cover letter and share it with the board. And I think we can, I think there are places that have definitions of special permits and other important terms. We can find those definitions somewhere. But if we're.
That manual that I sent you last year, Bill, that I sent around to the board, that probably has definitions in it.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good place to look. If we're agreed, I'll, I'll take a stab at a, at a cover letter and share it with you all as soon as I can.
Then we'll see what Jeff comes up.
I don't see what's wrong with that idea. I mean, anyway, I mean, do, do we need to take a vote about that? Or, or do you want to wait and, like, you, you do a letter and we'll, we'll vote on it then, or?
I say do up a letter, but, Bill and everybody, remember, when Bill sends it around, do not reply all, just stay on the right side of that.
Right, and I'll try to remember to insert that in the message, so that we're not seen to be deliberating. And I'll try to do that in the next few days, so that there's plenty of time before the next meeting. I don't think we need to vote on this at this point, if ever. I think we're in consensus, unless somebody has a serious misgiving about it, about this approach. It's a great idea, Wayne, thank you.
Hopefully it'll be helpful.
Yeah.
Great idea.
It's a hell of a lot easier than crafting a survey, because I think the more we think about it, the more we.
Directly. They look at it directly.
And the survey would have been, or would be, a lot of work on our part, as well as a consultant's. And that translates into a higher fee for whoever, whether it's this, this outfit or some other that we might choose to do the survey. It wouldn't come cheap. So, okay. You'll note that Jeff Lacy is not here. I didn't ask him to be here tonight, even though further discussion of the bylaws, both the NRHPZ and the Cottager Estate, is on the agenda. But I propose that a renewed discussion of those items might be more fruitful after we've seen Jeff's feedback on his site visits. And so I, I suggest that we defer that until.
Housing, housing is going to be on the agenda for the next meeting, Bill?
Yes, I made a note of that.
Okay. And then, are you winding things down? I did have a question before you do wind things down.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Are you still, did you have more to say on this topic? It winds on a different topic.
I don't think so.
Okay. So, there's more stuff in the chat, but, so my question is, we're almost at the, the half-year mark of the fiscal year, and I'm wondering if this meeting or next meeting, you could give us an update on where we are with the, the regional planning planner?
Oh, thank you for asking. I talked to Mike Canales today and, about that, among other things. And he has had discussion, well, to cut to the chase, he's going to come to the December 7th meeting, Mike, Mike Canales is going to come to the December 7th meeting, to talk about the town's relationship with BRPC, Berkshire Regional Planning. And so I don't want to steal his thunder, but it, some of you may already know that Phil Arnold, who was the consultant that we had been using, has left BRPC. And it, it's given Mike a chance to reconsider the kind of relationship he wants with BRPC from a planning perspective. And he's going to talk about that at our next meeting. So stay tuned.
Yep, good, okay.
Is there any other business?
I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm on, I'm, hold on, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to read your chat for you, Patrick?
What?
Do you want me to read your?
Here's my question, um, the special permit we're hearing Thursday for Machinac Terrace, do you know if the town has any regulations around how building height is measured?
Yes.
No, it's a big problem.
It's a problem.
It's a problem.
It's not our problem.
Our building, our building inspector actually politely refuses to make, make determinations on building height measurements.
Well, here's the thing.
Patrick, Patrick.
Let him finish, please. Go ahead, Patrick.
Okay. I'm putting in the chat, um, a sort of a mass housing regulation link, and they basically review the myriad ways that, that height is measured for, you know, in various towns and cities in Massachusetts. And unfortunately, unfortunately, of course, Stockbridge isn't on the list, but some of them measure from the ground floor up, others measure from the front of the building, ground, you know, the, the dirt up, others measure from the average of the four sides of the house and up. And in some of the ways people measure, this applicant is completely fine, and in other ways that people measure, it's not fine, he's over by almost 10 feet. And my question for you guys is, I'm kind of relatively new compared to my colleagues, and I was just wondering if historically, you guys had a standard by which you measured height?
So.
Sorry, Kate, hang on. Gary, you were quick to say.
No, I was, I was, I'm almost positive there's, there's something in there that says, and it's, it's by grade, isn't it, Kate?
It's, it's, so in the LPOD, which is what we work with, there is wording that indicates they're supposed to measure from the lowest point. So I know that, like, over in the Boochwood area, I distinctly remember Ruth Pierce sort of focusing in on that with a request, rightly so.
This is not the LPOD, as you know.
I know, I know, so, but I'm saying that's, that's the wording in the LPOD, but since we're on the topic, there are many violations over in the Machinac Terrace area. There are many, there's several properties that are in the LPOD.
This, this. But Kate, my point is that if you measure from the, and many towns do it this way, if you measure from the bottom of the first floor up to the top of the roof, they're not in violation, at least not this one. I'm not concerned about what was permitted before I, I had to vote. What I'm saying is that there's many different models, and I don't know if we have one that we use as a standard, even if it's just by tradition and not the bylaw.
So outside the LPOD, I don't know, you know, but I know there is wording in the LPOD.
There's, well, that was one of the things when we were doing the zoning review, which, you know, came up, was that there was no standard whatsoever for measuring height. I saw this application when they came before the Historic Preservation Commission. We said, go ahead, tear down your house, because it wasn't anything special. But I said, you know, I, I said, you know, I mean, this is really not our business at Historic Preservation, but, you know, you are in trouble. This is like 12 feet over our, our limits.
In the back, it's within 35.
Also, even in the elevations, they drew the line for where they were measuring the height of the house. It was over the level of the first floor. I mean, it was, I, I, I haven't seen anything quite so, like, just false. It was just, it was just, it was just fake, you know? So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good question, just in general, in theory, but in this case, also, like, you know.
Yeah. You guys didn't have any opinions on that, because, you know, at the, at the select board, if one of us votes against a special permit, it, it's denied, and I think that's a really, really extreme action to take against an applicant. But at the same token, you know, what I'm wondering is, like, did you guys have any sense of how you would like to see us measure height? Because, I mean, I think it's sort of arbitrary.
From the ground to the top, is my personal opinion.
How about everyone else?
Have you asked Ned, Patrick?
I asked today, and I didn't get an answer.
Ned, 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 Ned's a little radioactive on the subject.
Yeah, I've, I've asked him about it, and he says.
I only asked Michael, to be fair to Ned, I did not ask Ned directly.
But I, but my, my, in my humble professional opinion, it's from the ground to the top of the building.
I would use what's in the LPOD, it's what we have, I'd use it.
Yeah.
So, Patrick, I've asked Wayne about, I mean, not Wayne, Ned, about, you know, how he's measuring, because I know there's, there's violations over in the terrace. And, and he told me, he, let's just, let me finish, please. He told me he does not, he does not measure the height, and he has no way to measure the height. He said, I looked it up online, and there's actually an instrument that you can buy, it's not that expensive, and I.
Yeah. Kate, do you really believe people aren't going to follow the architectural plans? I mean, the plans show building 44 feet from the ground in the front, and 32 feet from the ground in the back, and 32 feet from the bottom of the first floor to the roof, which is, are all reasonable ways of measuring height according to mass housing regulations that link I just sent you.
Yeah, but.
As to know if you guys have.
Highest one, the 44 feet, like, that's, you know, we have a 35 foot limit.
35.
I know, Patrick.
All I know is that one engineer has pointed out to me that there are plenty of violations.
Maximum.
I hear you, yes, okay.
Yeah, so I just asked my husband, who got his contractor's license, and he said it's from ground level.
Yes.
Okay. I just can't hear Nancy, what?
Yeah.
Peter, my husband, who is contractor, has contractor's license, says that it's measured from the ground level up, 35 feet from ground level. Now, take it from there.
He, he's right, he's right.
Ground level is not the same as the dirt, some cities do it by the dirt. I think you guys should kind of clarify this.
It depends if it's on a slope.
If you look at the link I sent you in chat, you'll see there's a, a many different ways of measuring this, and it would be really helpful to people like me if you guys would decide and let me know. It's a, it's a planning board zoning issue.
Well, it is, it's, I mean, you know, all this other talk about zoning by law here, you know.
Stockbridge.
Aside, we, we really should have language that is quite clear about that in, in, in our, in our, in our, in our bylaws.
Well, we, we have it, the language in the LPOD is, is clear, but in the special permits that are handled by the, by the select board, you know, the, I guess the language isn't there, Patrick.
It's not a problem.
And I just feel like it's the only way to be fair to applicants is if you give them clear direction of what we expect.
Why don't you just do the same thing?
My suggestion, I've been making this for quite some time, is, is that there should be, like, not just wordage, verbiage, there should be an actual, like, little, like.
Diagram.
Diagram, saying, like, here's where the ground is, this is how we judge it, here's where the top of the building is. Doesn't.
Step.
And that was something that, that was something that zoning review recommended as well. Can we just do one person at a time? That was something that zoning review recommended as well. Chip, Joe.
Person at a time? Are you kidding me?
Right. Thank you, sorry for taking up your time.
Oh, no, no, this is, this is, this is, this is, this is not, this is not insignificant.
Yeah, no, it isn't.
Our secretary, having exited, we're not going to take a vote.
Jeez, what?
Thank you all.
I'm not voting to adjourn.
So moved and so voted.
I think.